Shannon makes a motion, Gary seconds. Any discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number five, tax abatement resolution, Pilgrims Pride, Golden Plum.
So you have a revised resolution on your desks or on your, at your spots. The county did ask, and Chris or Jessica, if you want to jump in here, the county asked to participate in our agreement with, our tax abatement agreement and business subsidy agreement with Golden Plum. So Chris, Verda from Freiburger, re-directed the resolution to include that language, allowing the city to enter in an agreement with Stearns County, which will reference our agreement with Pilgrims. Is that correctly stated, Chris?
That is accurate.
And then, so the resolution you have now will allow both the tax agreement with, tax abatement agreement with Golden Plum and then the tax abatement agreement with Stearns County, two different ones. So first, the resolution, well, I suppose you want to do, does it matter which order we do it in? Should we do the resolution and then the terms in the agreement or the agreement and then the resolution? Chris or Jess, do you have any?
I would do.
Go ahead, Chris.
Well, I was going to say, well, the resolution approved the agreement, so maybe you do want to discuss the terms first.
Okay. So at the last meeting, you wanted to wait and see what the county did. So the agreement that you got in the packet has both a 10-year highlighted area and it has 15 years. The county did do a maximum of 10 years on the same, the 4 million additional taxes at the 75% with a 10-year term. Their amount, but they up to the dollar amount of, and their taxes are higher than ours, so their up to amount is going to be more than ours. It's up to, where is that? Uh, maybe 2.1, $301,836.81. So, um, so the question is, if you look on page where it says the tax abatement agreement, so it's right after the, so it's not numbered page, but it's right after the table of contents. It's the first time you discuss it in the recitals, whereas, so it looks like this page in the tax abatement agreement, in that whereas recital, it has a 10-year term or a 15-year term for the years 222 to 231 or 222 to 236 and then the two amounts. If we go with the county and do only 10, it's the 270 to 960. And that's basically the only terms that need to be discussed while we're, or by you to make a decision on. And then I would revise this per whatever you determine. So I guess Acting Mayor, how do you?
Well, I believe that council member Schmitz had a concern about like 15. I believe he was in favor of 10.
I think that's what it was also.
He was at 10.
Yep.
And I would be in favor of 10.
And I would also, I would also be in favor of 10. So I would then like to make a motion. Or what do you want me to do?
Make a motion approving the tax abatement and business subsidy agreement with a 10-year term and dollars not to exceed 270 to 960, or the amount not to exceed.
I make a motion.
I'll second it.
Shannon makes a motion, Gary seconds it. Any further discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So that was resolution, just to clarify, 2020-54.
No, that was the tax abatement and business subsidy agreement itself.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
So now the terms, so the agreement is now incorporated into the resolution. So now if you do the resolution, it reaffirms that.
Okay, so now we're moving up to, we did number six, now we're moving up to number five?
No, number six is new. That's the Stearns County, which will come after this resolution.
Oh, gotcha, okay. So now we're doing 2020-54?
Correct.
Okay. Resolution authorizing and directing the mayor and city administrator to execute and deliver a tax abatement agreement with Golden Plum Poultry LLC. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Gary makes a motion, I'll second.
I'll second that.
Shannon seconds it. Any further discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And now this is the agreement with Stearns County that will reference our agreement with, and that's on your desk that you got there. And it allows for Stearns County to collect their taxes, send it to the city, and then we will distribute the fees annually to, from the two jurisdictions to Golden Plum upon their request for the taxes.
Perfect. Recommendation, to approve entry into an agreement with Stearns County to provide tax abatement to Golden Plum LLC. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Shannon makes a motion, do I have a second?
I will second.
Gary seconds, any discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Thank you, Golden Plum Pilgrims Pride.
I think we're done then, like Chris and Jess with your.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Robert. Have a good meeting.
Excellent. Thanks, Jessica, thanks, Chris. Number seven, fire and police department building funding option, Jacob Reiger.
It's right there. Oh, hold on, I don't have your sound, Jacob. I can't hear you.
Can't hear you, Jacob.
Don't talk yet. You're not muted, uh, oh, there you go.
Can you hear me now?
Turn me up. I'm going to try, turn me up, hold on.
Okay. It's showing green on my end, so.
There we go.
Oh, get a little closer to your mic, I think.
All right, I'll scooch right in here.
There you go.
All right. Bridget, do you want me to take it away or did you want to lead in with anything?
Go right ahead.
Sure. So thank you, everyone, for having me into the meeting tonight to discuss the fire hall financing proposal. Bridget and I started this conversation probably early part of the summer, May or June-ish, and just really preliminary to discuss the various options that the city would have to finance the, the construction of the new fire hall, followed by long-term permanent financing to put it in place. And my role here at Granite Community Bank is to help facilitate that. And I think we found a pretty good option, not only for the construction piece, but also for a couple of options on the permanent financing side. So starting out this process, I followed up a number of different leads with USDA, excuse me, talked with a number of individuals there. I also consulted with our legal counsel at Freiburger Buchanan. I believe the city also uses the same firm from time to time. And through that process, I concluded that on the, the construction piece, the, the city would be best served by issuing a three-year construction bond, which the bank would purchase, and it would be a drawdown type facility in which, when construction takes place and costs are incurred, the, the bank would then fund those construction costs through the bond. Upon conclusion of construction, which most likely will not take three years, this bond could then be paid off. And it would be paid out by a permanent financing facility. And there are really a couple of ways through the USDA to go about this. The first option, which I would recommend for the city, because I think it's the lowest cost option for the city, is a direct financing loan, which is direct from the USDA. The USDA funds it themselves. They have upwards of 40-year terms on it, and the interest rates, given today's environment, are remarkably low. The second option, should that not work out for any reason, would be the pursuit of a bank loan with, with my bank, and then we would pursue a USDA guarantee, and they guarantee sometimes upwards of 90% of the loan. But through discussions I've had with the USDA, with Freiburger Buchanan, sounds like, you know, the, the option that most municipalities go towards is the direct loan with the USDA on the permanent side. And, you know, there's an application process that, that takes place through that, which would really happen on the front end as you, you all go through this process to plan out deconstruction. The bank would work with the city and the other third parties that are engaged to help bring this thing together, such as your engineers and architects, legal. And so you would get approval from the USDA prior to breaking ground or issuing any type of construction bond. So I think that's, that's really the high points, but would welcome any questions you all have.
Does anyone have any questions for Jacob?
No, I don't. I don't have any. Do you have anything to add, Bridget?
Uh, no, I, I think we're good. I think we would, I would want to amend that motion that's on here to also accept a proposal letter from Jacob Reiger of Granite Community Bank, so that, that agreement, so that relationship is set under your authority. So I would amend what's there to, because I will do most of the application, Jacob will help a little, USDA walks you through a lot of it. Our architects that you're going to approve the contract for have done it with other cities, and they also help walk through, so with all the different entities together, it will get us to that point where Jacob's talking about having that, that, uh, direct loan approved before we even issue the bonds to have construction covered. Accurate there, Jacob? Was that accurate there, Jacob? Did you hear that?
No, I caught, I didn't catch that last piece.
Oh, I said, I'm, I'm asking them to amend, right now I put as, I'm recommending that they authorize me to apply for the USDA, but they should also accept your proposal letter for fin, for that financing option.
Yeah, that all sounds accurate.
Yeah.
Okay, so the recommendation would read as, "To authorize the city administrator to apply for USDA funding for the fire and police department building in addition to accepting the proposal letter from Jacob Reiger." Good enough?
Yep.
Perfect. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Gary makes a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Shannon seconds it. Any discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Jacob. I'll get ahold of you tomorrow.
Have a good meeting.
Thanks. Number eight, recap of closed meeting on September 22nd, 2020, city council meeting. This was related to two sessions. The city council was presented with a proposal to purchase from the EDA two lots in the business park. That offer was rejected and a counteroffer of another business park property was approved. The city council directed the city administrator to present the counteroffer and the city attorney to draft a purchase agreement based on that counteroffer. The other was, a landowner in Cold Spring presented the council with a proposal for the city to purchase the landowner's property. That offer was rejected. And that is number eight. Number nine.
Number nine, the city attorney is the same for our criminal prosecution and our civil actions. The court has asked the city attorneys to provide proof that they have authority to represent the cities of Richmond and Cold Spring. And so an agreement for this calendar year, 2020 prosecution is before you to be approved so that I can send it to them, so the court will accept. Jovanovic, Stegi, and Athman as the city attorney for all prosecution.
It's the same thing we do every year, right?
They review it every couple of years, and they say, yeah, we haven't gotten a new one. So we haven't done it every year, but this is the second time since I've been here that we have to do it.
Recommendation, to approve entry into the prosecution contract with Jovanovic, Stegi, and Athman. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Shannon makes a motion, do I have a second?
I will second.
Gary seconds, any further discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 10, public works director, John Stevie.
Good evening, Acting Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
First thing I have on my report is the digester mixer. There was two options presented in front of you. The company felt that option number one, them rebuilding the current agitator was sufficient as buying a new one, so we'll save the $4,000 and go that route. Looking to get approval on that out of equipment repair and upkeep and sewer department.
I'll read the recommendation, "To approve the bid to repair the door all over agitator from Rapid Process Equipment Incorporated at a cost of $10,066.83, and furthermore, to be paid out of the sewer department equipment and repair budget item 6313." I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Gary makes a motion, I need a second.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Letter B, we have approval of lawnmower safety protocol. We put together, or I put together a, just kind of a template that I got off the internet, but we have it in front of you. Just a checklist, more so, of different safety procedures. What I'm going to do is I'm going to meet with all of my staff, anybody who ever steps on a lawnmower for the year. We're going to go through this, they're going to sign off on it that they got the proper safety, safety training. As we get part-time employees here in the springtime, same thing will go for them before they can use a lawnmower, they need to run through the safety protocol and sign off on it. Just a little precaution for ourselves and.
Do you know this would satisfy a motion?
I believe so. All they said was put one together. They didn't specify which one, and this does come from, well, I don't know what EGA Cooperative is, but it does link all the items in a lawnmower, how to use it.
Okay.
Yeah, it's tough, it's tough to find a specific, like, safety procedure for one lawnmower.
Right.
I mean, generally, a general idea of, of each lawnmower is the same, so we can figure it out.
Right.
I did email as well, MMU was our safety coordinator, asked him if we could do different things as far as safety. Like, every year is the repetitive six different things we learn about. So if you've been going to the training for more than a year, you know what's coming. He did say that in his larger groups of, I shouldn't say larger groups of people, but the cities that allow him to do 12 safety trainings throughout the year instead of six, they get a little bit better idea of, or a little bit better training on different topics. I brought the lawnmower training with them, some more in-depth snowplow training, different things that we do on a daily basis in the winter or spring or, you know, summer, whatever. And he's going to send out an email to the group, the group has to agree on it. We go there with, I think, eight or 10 other cities. So if the group can agree on doing 12 trainings, we'll get some better training as well on topics that are more motivating activities for us. So it'd be kind of a good thing. I don't, I don't know what we do for the cost of the training, but that training is so cheap, I'd be all in favor of going 12 times a year.
I don't see anything in here about seatbelt and riding lawnmower.
Yeah, that's because this is a template, like I said, this is a template for a push mower. I couldn't find one on a riding lawnmower. We're, we're going to add that, we'll add with the roll bar as well on a riding lawnmower. Anytime a lawnmower has a roll bar, you gotta wear your seatbelt, that's just the way it is. Different things like, you know, belt guards and things like that, we'll do it specific to our lawnmower.
Yeah, it's showing pictures of them with the roll bars, but, yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions for John? I'll read the recommendation, "To approve the lawnmower safety protocol proposed by the public works director and direct the public works director to train all current users with the protocol on October 14th, 2020." I need a motion.
I'll make a motion with the changes that we suggested.
And I will second that with those changes.
Motion by Shannon, second by Gary. Any further discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Project updates, I'll let Brian and Ryan do those. Just a reminder, October 21st and 22nd, we're doing hydro flushing. The notice is in the paper, if it's not in there already, it's in there, I think it's in there this week. And again, I'll be calling the businesses that are affected by pressure loss and things like that. Also, fall cleanup in your yards, don't blow it onto the city street, clean it up, it's very bad for the storm source. And the occasional time that somebody's around telling, it seems like you always see somebody blowing it on the street. It's, save your tax dollars and let's not ruin the storm source.
Please.
So that's all I have.
All right, nice. Thank you, John. Up next, city engineer, Brian Lynch.
Acting Mayor and Council. Start with, kind of go through the projects here and bring Ryan up, Ryan Capell, our water plant engineer. So he can speak a little more to that part when we get there. We'll start with the, the other projects. 158, just noting, we're looking to have the assessment hearing on November 10. The remainder of the work is, bulk of it's going to take place in 2021, the wear course, cleanup, we'll see what, what areas didn't grow, touch those areas up, all that kind of cleanup, but otherwise, we're pretty well done for the year. And then throughout the process, we're looking to talk to some other property owners, you know, we had one in particular that came through the, our second improvement hearing. We're trying to get, we've had a meeting set up with him this summer, trying to get back in touch with him as, as that never worked out. So trying to contact those that we were going to contact ahead of the meeting as well. Looking at the assessments, I think you have the memo in there. Overall, the project came in, from what we're, what we're seeing here, we estimate out to what next year is going to, what we're going to put down, for example, for pavement, those sort of things. Looking like we're coming in under, so the actual city expense coming in lower as well as, it's actually, we would refer to as, as our assessment proceeds, but in reality, that's good as well, because that means we're assessing less to the homeowners. So overall, pretty happy at how, how the project came in and how, how, how the construction went. So I guess if there's any questions on 158, otherwise, we would need to approve the resolution declaring the cost and calling for the hearing there.
Any questions for Brian? I'll read the recommendation, "To approve resolution 2020-53, resolution declaring costs to be assessed, ordering preparation of the proposed assessments and call hearing." I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Gary makes a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Shannon seconds it. Any further discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Can I jump in quick? So in that resolution you just approved, you tell me, you direct me to send out the proper notices, which should be two weeks before the hearing. The hearing's going to be November 10th, that city council meeting. I anticipate, and so does Brian, that we're going to get kind of a larger group of taxpayers.
Right.
I have asked the superintendent if there's any space that they have available for us. I'm going to meet with him, so.
So we can have a larger room, deeper.
Yeah, if I can find a room, I'm anticipating 30.
Okay.
Property owners, probably. So I'm working with him, so I'd like to have permission to identify a space before the notice is out, so it has a location that we'll use for that hearing. So the November 10th city council meeting will not be at city council, it'll be wherever that I can find a space that will hold that many people.
Whatever's good for the safety of.
Right.
Of people.
Yeah, I'll need a motion to be approved, to allow to identify that place.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Gary makes a motion, Shannon seconds it to approving the administrator's suggestion. Any further discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, moving on to the wells project, the vaults, I was just out there earlier, the vaults are in the ground, so we're working on getting the well components installed. Next will be building the road with the power to follow, so we're, the overhead power, so we're working towards getting those wells online. The piping improvement project, we're getting back to that, we just got some borings back. We were trying to do a little better job of locating some bedrock around Public Works, so that when we actually get out there in the field, we don't run into hopefully as many surprises. So trying to do our due diligence as we plan out that route. Wastewater pretreatment, we've been working on some site layout concepts, also working with, recently working with a brewery to nail down some of the design sizing. It's kind of been a little bit of a back and forth of what they've asked for, and they asked for something a little different, and so I think we finally got the, the sizing of the pretreatment nailed down. Blue Heron Heights, I was out there a little bit earlier as well, we started pipe work today, so they're getting sewer pipes started going in the ground today, so probably two or three weeks worth of, probably closer to three weeks worth of pipe work out there, and then depending on how the weather is and if things can hold, starting to build that roadway. It'll be into November, but if we have favorable conditions, we have favorable soil out there, it's sand and cobble, so if things line up, we could get some, some road building going this year yet too. And that kind of, unless there's any other questions on those, we'll kind of maybe move into the water treatment plant. I have Ryan Capell with me, the engineer for, and project manager for the water treatment plant, the lead designer. I don't know if any of you have met Ryan before, he was, we were just talking, I think, two years ago, we were on, went and toured a bunch of plants, got to see some down in cities. Since that time, we've been to Sartell with Public Works, looking at some plants. We've been also, kind of through the heart of the design process, meeting with Public Works, kind of on a two, three week basis, really just kind of working side by side with them to go through the design, talk about the features of the plant, how we, what it's going to have, how it's going to, how it's going to work to operate. So we've had John and his staff, and, and they've, they've been very involved through the entire process, and it's been a, it's been a good design process, because they've had a ton of input, they've, they've had a lot of good opinions on the plant, they've raised a lot of good questions about how we do things, what would work better, what's going to be easier for maintenance, for operation, safety, all those things. So a big thank you to John and his staff at Public Works for all the input that they've had and really making this a custom plant for them. It is, it's their plant, they've had, they've had a ton of input on it, so. I can kind of turn it over to Ryan, you'll talk through some of the, couple, you know, briefly talk about some of the design features, unless you have any questions initially on it. Ryan can kind of cover just kind of the high points of, of what's, what's all in the plant.
Sure. Thank you, Brian, and thank you, council and members that are here today. I should maybe start, since I haven't had a chance to, to thank you for the opportunity just to work on this project. The members that Brian mentioned that came around and toured with us, the mayor and Doug and Bridget, aren't, well, the other two aren't here today, but for, I just realized on the way here, it's been a two-year time since we did those tours. And so much has transpired both before those tours took place and until now. I can take a little step back into memory lane on this, this saga began really years ago when nitrate levels were getting above the MCL. It moved into looking for water sources that didn't contain nitrate and evolved further into an opportunity to ask the legislature for funding. The city, side by side, with some advocating from us and others, was able to capture that, that grant through the bonding bill. And we put that grant to good work. So first thing we did was run a pilot study to check on a technology that would work to take your nitrates and lower them. That technology has now been implemented into a treatment plant design, which I have in front of me, the plans are before you. So the first element of that plant, first and foremost, is that treatment technology, which the Department of Health approved. It's a rather cutting-edge technology. This would be the first of its kind in the state of Minnesota. It's a technology that results in very low discharge and waste. The waste that's generated doesn't have a negative impact on the environment. That's one of the reasons why Public Works wanted to pursue this. So this is a pioneering effort. I think this, this project in general and the leadership that your Public Works has shown sets it up, it has the right stuff to receive an award. I think this is the type of project that will get recognized, and we've approached this project with a great. this project with a great deal of pride, both internally and with your, I really count your Public Works as part of the team. So biological treatment is the key element here, but we also then need to take that water that's treated and capture it. So we call that a clear well. From the clear well, that is where the treated water resides, we pump that water up to.
Do you want to move your camera so they can actually see?
Oh.
Sorry, Ryan.
You just see the shine on my head. Yeah, so hello, everyone. From the clear well, we have high service pumps, is the term we use for them. Those pumps pump the water from the clear well basin to the tower elevation. Currently, your wells just pumped from the ground up to the tower. Now we're going to use this clear well to hold the treated cleaned water and pump that up. So we have high service pumps, there's two pressure zones, so there's two different types of pumps involved. We also have chemical storage, there's a great deal of chemical that needs to be balanced to go into this treatment process. So a great deal of thought went into how those chemical rooms should be oriented and designed so that they're safe and reliable, and also we use bulk storage to cut down on the cost per gallon, so eventually, those large bulk tanks will pay for themselves. Also in the plant, and this is a unique feature that was a direct result of working with your Public Works staff, something we haven't done before, but developed together, is a blending manifold, if you will. It's kind of hard to explain, but what this is, is it gives your Public Works the option to take and decide which wells will contribute to the water treatment process. Some wells will be sent to treatment, the Public Works have the option to choose which specific wells, and that's important because with nitrate contamination, as you run a well, the nitrate tends to move towards that well. And so occasionally, you're going to want to change which well is being sent to the treatment plant. And with this manifold, Public Works will have the option of changing that well that goes to treatment versus the wells that just go into the clear well and kind of blend together. So this concept, while it seems quite simple, is, is quite simple, but it does add a little bit of physical space and complexity to the valving, but that is one of the key features to this water plant that I think will save the community money over time. We may be able to blend ourselves into compliance, blend the water supply into compliance as things change and as water, as regulations change. The other, and I guess the last one I'll talk about today is the backwash tank. So as this treatment process, I mentioned earlier, it's a very low environmental impact water that is, is produced as waste. The base bid design, this is a cost-saving measure as well, the base bid design includes infiltrating the wastewater into a very good lens of material that can accept and infiltrate the waste stream. That will be our base bid. As part of the design, though, we did incorporate a backwash tank, and the importance of a backwash tank is it's a concrete tank that can hold that wastewater. In the future, the city may elect to reclaim that water, it's not the current plan, but this backwash tank was designed as an alternate, so depending on how competitive the bids come in, we can elect to take and build that tank with the money that's available today, or it's designed and ready to go in the future if backwash water reclaim is something that the city wants to pursue. So that's also included with your design. I think I've probably told you more than you wanted to hear, so I think I'll conclude there and open the floor to any questions.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for me?
I've not scored enough about that to ask a question, but it sounds cutting-edge technology, which is wonderful.
Yes.
John, you're comfortable with the whole thing?
Absolutely.
All right.
The cost will be a little more than what we originally, you know, we had hoped to say, but the changes and the improvements to it are going to be dollar for dollar worth every penny, and hopefully bidding will bring it to a point where it won't be that far off of the $4 million.
Right. Part of the, the journey we've been on, working with Bridget and achieving that grant that I mentioned earlier, that's a $4 million grant, and so the initial goal of the project was to just design something that totaled $4 million, and that was our initial charge, and that's what we actually had a kind of a preliminary plan to do. But as we worked through the process, and as we worked through with Public Works, and we determined what the right design is, there are elements, both functional and safety and operational improvements and elements, I guess, that the Public Works would like to have included, and as you do that, it does increase the overall size and cost of the project. And, but at the same time, I will commend Public Works on being what may be rather frugal with some of the dollars spent, saving money in some areas such as painting concrete surfaces which don't need to be protected, and rather putting those dollars towards something more functional like this manifold I talked about.
Excellent. All right. Anything else to add, Brian?
The only other thing was, you know, we're looking at a, right now, a very favorable bidding market. Ryan's talked to a number of the contractors, they seem very interested in the project. We also have, you know, the state has not passed a bonding bill, which is probably making our situation actually a little bit better because there isn't a lot of work out there. So we're hoping for favorable, favorable bidding conditions, you know. We're looking to bid right before Thanksgiving, give them about four weeks here, so we're pretty hopeful on the, on the bidding climate. Never know, but I think it's as good as we can, as good as we can be right now.
Excellent. They just go resolution one after the other?
Yeah.
Cover everything, right?
Well, Brian, do you want to talk a little bit about why the agreement has to be amended?
Yeah, so one of those, and I had included as well, Ryan and I pulled together a letter talking about the professional services agreement, really, a lot of the reasons that Ryan covered, working with Public Works, we, we found a lot of things that could be, we could make better, we could make safer, we could make the plant easier to operate, really get that better bang for our buck. But because of that, it also increases the cost of, makes the plant bigger, adds more complexity. Because of that, it also takes more effort on our part to do those things, based on what we had originally talked about. So that's why the expanded professional services agreement is in there. Some of it covering the design end of the project, and then some of it covering the construction end of the project, because as the, as the building gets bigger and more complex, it's going to take more construction observation, administration, shop drawing time, all those things associated with construction.
You could, you might imagine, the initial design, which we worked with Bridget on and Public Works on the cost estimate, was a box, just a simple one-level box on grade, and as these features developed, one example would be that manifold I talked about, that ends up coming in at frost grade below, eight feet below finish grade, turns the building into two stories. So that, while it's a very good feature to have, it does add complexity to the building. In general, the original design was a 2,800 square foot box, and I remember Bridget making the comment, corners are expensive, so don't, don't put any more corners than you need. We did add one extra interior corner and one extra outside corner, but the, the new facility is 4,800 square feet, so we're 2,000 square feet more, and so with that, kind of naturally becomes more design effort, more bang for your buck. I turned the phrase on the way here, I was thinking about how to explain this, there are more ideas per square inch in this building than in that box that we had originally, so. And a lot of those ideas are the result, direct result of kicking back and forth between Public Works and our team. So I'm particularly proud of those, I think those reflect some of the things that don't typically come out of these designs. For me, this process has been more enjoyable than almost any of the others that I've been a part of, and I've been a part of about 50 of these. I really get, I like what I do, and I really enjoy working with your staff, and I think that we've got some pretty good stuff that was generated out of this process.
I think a crucial component too, Ryan, if you want to discuss with the size of the plant, is the fact that we have the space now to double the treatment process if we have to buy two more adage tanks for the future.
Right. That's a good point, I don't know how much you want to listen to me talk, but I, one of the elements that was added as part in during this process that John just brought up is, we have this adage biological treatment technology, it's a two-tank setup, and eventually, that equipment is going to need to be maintained or serviced, and so what that means, these are steel pressure filter vessels, they're eventually, the steel and water don't get along, and the paint deteriorates, and it needs to be blasted off and painted. If we find ourselves in the situation where we're fully dependent on that treatment process to deliver water that's compliant with EPA standards, we will have no choice but to purchase an additional line of equipment and put that online so that we can take the original line off and have it blasted and painted alternatively. And part of the ingenuity of this design is that, that manifold that I described earlier could potentially allow us to blend our way to compliance during the time when those original vessels would need to be maintained. We just don't know how the nitrate plume is going to change, we don't know how the Department of Health is going to regulate, they actually having us target half of the MCL, so from 10 milligrams per liter is the MCL, the maximum contaminant level, they want us to target five. Why is it five? Well, in the future, the regulation might be five, but they don't like walking along the line of compliance, they want to know where you're going to make it. And so with that in mind, we built, and kind of happened in conjunction with the clear well, this facility has space to house a reciprocal system like what you have within it, without the need to add and re-mobilize, add building space, which just in the mobilizing, demolition of a wall and a construction project would almost cost as much as the equipment itself. It's about a $1 million charge for that equipment. A construction project would probably cost you a million dollars right there. So through the ideas and the planning that's gone into this design, we've been able, we were able to create space for that if it were to be needed, and we also have another way, a backup plan, that might allow us to avoid that in the future anyway, and then that space is just available for other things. One thing that we learned about during the pilot study, there could be some, what they call turbidity in the water, which is cloudiness in the water after we go through the treatment process. We were assured by the technology provider that that wouldn't be the case with the full scale, but if there are problems, this is a, only the third of its kind in the country, if there were to be problems, there's space available without having to expend large capital to demolish walls. We have a large garage door, we have panels of wall that can be removed and rebuilt in without major cost. So that was, again, probably more than you wanted to hear, but another key feature to this design.
I think it also gives you the ability in the future to, if technology changes or some, in 20 years, something better comes along, the base plant is really there, the base components are there, you can take that technology out and essentially drop a new technology in.
Let's face it, technology is always improving, and that was something that we batted back and forth a lot between Public Works is, let's not hem ourselves in with any of the walls of this building, let's make sure that we can expand, add a building, add a room to the north, to the west, east, as many places as possible to make this building as versatile to adapt to future technology without having to completely demolish and start over. This, this building definitely allows for that.
Yeah, so not just the extra, the additional open space inside, if you get beyond that, it's designed that we're not, we didn't tie ourselves in that we're stuck. We left open areas, like Ryan said, you can go to the north, you can go to the west, and those are purposefully put there for future expansions. It's really easy to design a simple box, and it's really easy to over-design something as well. Getting that right design that fits what this community, what this Public Works department needs, that's where it takes effort, and that's one of the things we were able to achieve.
With that, I'll read the recommendation. To approve the amendment to the professional service agreement with STANTEC for the water treatment plant, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Gary makes a motion, I need a second.
I'll second that.
Shannon seconds it. Any further discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second recommendation, to approve the water treatment plans presented, or sorry, to approve the water treatment plant plans as presented, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Shannon makes a motion, I need a second.
I'll second.
Gary seconds. Any further discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Any further updates?
I think that's it, we're going to get plans out, getting ready for bidding here, start the process for advertising, all the things we need to. Hopefully, if all goes well, you know, if all goes well, second meeting in November, we'll have our, our numbers, and if for whatever reason, there's, there are bigger questions or other issues, we always have the ability to push back another week or two to give, give contractors time to look at it, so I think we're sitting in a very good, in a very good spot.
Yeah, I should just mention that these plans are sitting on the desk of the reviewers at the Department of Health, and so we are still waiting their official comments, those would need to be incorporated prior to bid. There is, during the bidding period, if we were to receive those comments, we could add them in by what they call addendum, so.
And we've gotten, we've gotten their preliminary comments back already, so we're starting to address some of the comments that they already had, so.
That's right.
Excellent. All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you all, very much.
PFA, just so you know, PFA did need the design before we can enter the contract to get the money from the state. Everything is from May 31st, 2019.
19.
19 or 18?
We started this.
19.
November 18th, yeah. So it's 19.
Is eligible to be put towards that dollar amount, so it, we can look back, so I, we have been waiting for that, we had to get a design, and we'll wait for that final approval. I think we'll send them this.
Yep.
And see if everything is right, and then we'll have an agreement at one of the next couple council meetings, I'm not sure which one, that the final version of that agreement will be ready to go, so that we can start getting money back for what we spent and available for construction.
Excellent.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thanks. Move on to number 12, Police Department report, Chief Blue.
Good evening. Nothing to prove for me this week, just some updates for the month of September. In Colts Run, we had 288 total incidents, 24 medical emergencies, 12 suspicious activities, 103 traffic stops with 35 citations, then 149 miscellaneous calls for service. In Richmond, we had 94 total incidents, nine medicals, six suspicious activities, 26 traffic stops with seven citations, and then 53 miscellaneous calls for service. One thing I didn't want to point out, it was approved in the consent agenda for accepting a donation, but Shady's Long Shots had a fundraiser on September 11th, and they split the proceeds between us and the fire department. They gave us a donation last week of $533, so just wanted to say thank you to them, and thank you for that. And then last week, the squad car that we ordered in January finally arrived last week, so some of the equipment for it is still backordered, it's kind of trickling in, but hopefully, before the snow flies, we have a squad that's equipped and ready to be on the road, so it's out getting decal'd right now because some of the equipment that goes inside is backordered, so just trying to get what we can done as we can, so that's where it's at right now, and hopefully, before too long, Connor's able to put it together for us.
Great. Excellent.
And that's all I really have. Unless you guys have questions for me?
I don't have for me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief. Number 13, City Administrator report.
Well, thank you, Acting Mayor. So the first item on there is the contract for Architectural Services. This is a standard contract, the city attorney and I did go through it with Wendell, and some of the corrections have been approved. The corrections are on the addendum, and so it shows you what we took out and what we kept, and so I put it in there so that you could see where the changes were. So I'm just looking for approval so that. So I am just looking for approval so that Wendell Five Bugles can start working with everybody to move along at the fire hall.
I will read the recommendation. To approve entering into a contract with Wendell Five Bugles Design Firm for Architectural Services for the Fire and Police Building, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Shannon makes a motion, I need a second.
I'll second that.
Gary seconds. Any further discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, next is to identify members of the city council that would want to sit on the construction committee. I, if you notice in my memo, these are kind of the, I put in there who I thought should be on it, and that's completely up to you to make decisions on the number of people that are on there, but I, the fire chief, and I don't know if you want an extra fireman or the police chief and a couple extra police, so I, as you see, there's a lot of links in that recommendation, so I think if you have a discussion amongst yourselves and.
I think Dave and Doug and, no, yeah. Well, anyone who's not here.
Councilmember Schitt did say he'd like to be on it.
Yeah, okay.
I would like to.
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that. You know, we definitely need a fire chief, police chief.
Yeah.
And do you have any other recommendations?
I have a planning commission member only because, well, I put them on there, I don't know if you wanted them, they will be there to help with site plan, but that could be, as long as it stays, it doesn't need any variances, and we have eight acres, we shouldn't need any variances since we can design it how you want. You don't necessarily have to have a planning commission member there.
I'm also on the planning commission.
That's true, so then you would, and so, yeah, we don't want both of you because then we'd have a quorum. Um, yeah, so you could be there as the representative of the planning commission.
How about you?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be on there.
Okay.
And so I guess it's a matter of how many, the fire chief did say that he'd like one or two available to be with him if he needs them or to be alternative for him. I can't speak for the chief, so I don't know what he, police chief.
It'd be nice to at least have one other person with me to sit in on those meetings, so if I'm not able to be there at a meeting or something, they're at least up to speed and not having to try and keep something up and.
I would like to suggest that the fire chief and the police chief have one appointee. I'm concerned about getting too many.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to say.
If you have two or three additional and they're not at the meeting because the primary is there, then all of a sudden, they're kind of behind the curve.
Right. So one, the chief and one additional member of there.
Yes.
So that they're always there.
Yes.
Okay.
Are we forgetting anyone?
I mean. I suppose I did not put myself on this, but so we're the city admin.
John, do you?
What's that?
Do you feel the need to have anyone represented at, for that construction?
I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't think so. I think, I think between Chief Blue and Chief Weber, they can ask us questions along the way if, if you're going to be in our department or something, but.
Okay. The civil work will be done for the site by STANTEC, so all of the water in and out and the lands, the curbing and gutter in the storm, that will all be done by our city.
He'd be at the meetings anyways, as just, I mean.
No, I think they'd, they'd, we'd get the designs for Brian, wouldn't we, for you? And then you would.
I think when, I think as you probably get closer to site.
Yeah.
I would, I'd be there, but, you know, for just straight building stuff, I don't think I would.
Yeah. When we get to the, the site planning of where this access is going to come off the road, what the curb is going to do, what we're going to need for storm, they'll get all, the architects will get all the calculations to Brian, who will then design it to meet our code and watershed and, well.
Setbacks, all.
Setbacks, all that.
Okay.
Okay.
So then it would be.
So we'd appoint Doug, Doug Schmidt, Gary Tyson, along with City Administration, City Administrator, the fire chief, and one, one person from the fire department, and police chief, and one person from the police department. All right, okay, so the recommendation is to appoint Councilman, Councilmember Schmidt and Councilmember Tyson to the construction along with the City Administrator Committee to represent the council in addition to the fire chief and one person from the fire department along with the police chief and one member from the police department as being appointed. I need a motion.
Motion.
Shannon makes a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Gary seconds. Any further discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
For all the committees, the next item, Acting Mayor is, Planning Commission is the only one that has a member whose term ends this year. And so I'd like permission to advertise, I know the sitting applicant will probably apply, but under ordinance, you have to advertise and request people, or request for anyone who's interested, give them the opportunity. So I'd like approval to advertise for planning, and I anticipate that the December Planning Commission is where the interview and recommendation would be made so that for the January appointment, it would be ready for that.
Okay. Recommendation, to approve advertising for one applicant for the Planning Commission, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Gary makes a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Shannon seconds it. Any further discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
Uh, next item, the marquee sign. So the marquee stopped responding to us updating the messages. Luckily, it was after we put the dates of in-person voting that are running on there, because it's, it's given a lot of people an opportunity to come in and ask questions about that. If it wasn't there, I don't know if we'd have as many people. But the problem is in the sign itself. A friend of mine actually works for a company that made it, so he swung by and he kind of followed it along, and his recommendation is to have them, that the message receptive component hardware in the sign is probably where the problem is. And so we have contracted, or we've contacted Scenic Sign Company to come out and repair it. What I found out is that for all these electronic signs, you either contact a company and they come out and charge you for the visit to figure out and diagnose it, then they go back, order the parts, come back, and so you've got another trip charge and all the components. Scenic Design just orders all the components, I think, are the problem, and we know that it's in the, in the system itself inside the sign. So they'll order all that, bring it out, and then they can return everything they don't use. So this is, if every single component necessary to fix it, this is the cost that it would be. So I put the full amount, I anticipate it'll be less than that when you get the actual, when you see the check going out for the bill. But I wanted to make sure the recommendation covered the maximum amount of the cost. Okay.
How much is the new sign?
About $15,000 to $25,000.
All right, I'll read the recommendation. To approve the bid from Scenic Sign Company in the amount of $4,783 to repair the marquee sign, and furthermore, to be taken out of City Hall Building and Grounds Line Item 6411, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Shannon makes a motion, I need a second.
I'll second.
Gary seconds. Any further discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Um, an update on that business park plot or offer that the Acting Mayor discussed in the recap, it was accepted. Uh, so we have a signed purchase agreement. Actually, yes, the EDA signed it, yes, did, you signed it yesterday, the Acting Vice-Chef President signed it?
Yep.
Okay. The applicant has also applied for the zoning, rezoning, the lock consolidation of the variance that was part of the agreement, that they would seek those three things to get it ready. And those are moving forward, so I just wanted to give you an update. Uh, F, so the federal court yesterday, I think, approved or upheld the agreement that allows the state to count absentee ballots for seven days after November 3rd for the, so on November 10th is when the last day, the county will be feeding any absentee ballots into the counter. Wednesday is a holiday, county employees won't be working that day, and then Thursday, they, they hope to get all the numbers for all of the elections at their final, you know. Normally, we would canvass the city election results at that November 10th meeting, because that's the first meeting of the month, and it's within the 10, you can canvass three days after election to 10 days after election. So either Friday to Friday. The county doesn't, doesn't anticipate to have the numbers ready until Friday the 13th, which is the last possible day under state law to canvass. And so you, as the canvassing board for the municipal, kind of will only get those numbers. They can, they're telling us, they can't guarantee them before late afternoon Thursday or Friday morning, or Friday morning. So I'm hoping that we could set a canvassing meeting on November 3rd. It will literally be a one-minute meeting to approve the numbers and declare the winners. And I'm hoping we could do it at noon, and that's why that's open. I know Councilmember Schmidt and Councilwoman Hein and that's the middle of hunting, so the mayor said he will be nearby hunting, so he could be here if we have a problem with quorum. So is noon an okay time on that day for all of you? And so then I would have that in the. Yeah. I'm ready for a break now. Figured you could take a lunch break at noon. Yep.
Just out of curiosity, what if they don't have the numbers by 12:00 PM, or do they have to have them by a certain time on?
Well, I, we've been communicating with them, I think they will have them.
Okay.
Because they can actually, I did call, and I might have mentioned to some of you, week and a half ago, I asked how many Cold Spring absentee ballot requests have they received compared to the 128 that we had four years ago? They were at 660, and they've gotten 330 ballots back that are valid and ready to be counted. And as they get them, they have, they can count absentee ballots starting two weeks before November 3rd. So that's October 22nd, 20th around there, they will start feeding all those ballots. And so I have a feeling that they will get a lot of them. I think there's going to be a lot more on the front end than on the back end coming in through mail. Because of the concern that people are having with mail, they're either going to put them in the drop boxes, take them personally to the county, or come here during our direct. I have a feeling we'll get a huge number for direct voting, October 27th through November 2nd. For the primary, we had 17, I'm sure we're going to smash that number too. I don't know. I wouldn't be surprised if it's 100. So there's, in 20, 16, 21, 100 ballots were cast for the presidential vote in this building, and I bet half of them will be done before November 3rd, if not more, for this year.
Okay. All right, anything else?
No.
For that part, okay.
For that one, no.
So I read the recommendation. To approve setting the canvassing board meeting for November 13th, 2020, at 12:00 PM at City Hall, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Gary makes a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Shannon seconds it. Any further discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
It was announced to the general public this morning that Recorey will be going to hybrid for all of K through 12. At this point, they aren't looking for a lot of space outside. They, I believe if I'm reading the email I got as a parent, right, the K through 5 already have distance, hybrid enough space in their, in how they set up rooms, so like the number of kids in a class and how they're physically together in the classroom. But there are some co, co-curricular items that they're looking for space in town to hold. And I believe I talked a while ago, they're looking to, as a way to assist them with distance learning, hybrid learning, and going back and forth, and depending on their numbers, they could be hybrid, they could be in-person, they could be full distance. For the year, school year 2021, there's a resolution in front of you that allows them to find buildings in the city that would meet their co-curricular or their educational needs or extracurricular needs. Normally, most of those would not, most of downtown, most of the commercial buildings are zoned in a way that school wouldn't be allowed there, but to give them permission to have temporary waiver or relief from the zoning requirements during the pandemic. So there's a resolution in front of you that I'd like to have approved, and then, right now, it's just one building they're looking for, and it allows, and in that recommendation, the superintendent and I will work together and they will get approval from me so that we can verify it's not going to be a huge amount of traffic wherever they're going or that there's proper parking, those types of things. And I'll work with them to make sure whatever they find available meets their needs and we can address zoning issues without having to go through full planning commission. James?
Recommendation, to approve Resolution 2020-55, a resolution allowing for temporary relief from zoning requirements for school sites, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Shannon makes a motion, I need a second.
I'll second.
Gary seconds it. Any further discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Perfect. Moving on to number 14. To review and accept payments of the accounts payable according to the list and supplement of the list presented by city staff, I need a motion to pay the bills.
I'll make a motion.
Gary makes a motion, I need a second.
Well, absolutely second that.
Shannon seconds it. Any further discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Paying bills. General questions and comments from the council? Gary?
Nothing for me.
Shannon?
Nothing this evening.
And nothing for me. Next city council meeting, October 27th. I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Gary makes a motion to adjourn, I need a second?
Oh, I don't know. I'll second that.
Second of all, Shannon. Any further discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.